I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, my report is going to be fairly brief. I've been on vacation and just a word about the meeting tonight and according to the executive order, masks may be temporarily removed when testifying speaker are performing in indoor business or indoor space. We're not performing tonight, I don't think, in situation or setting such as theaters, news conferences, legal proceedings, governmental meetings, subject to the open meeting law, presentations or lectures, provided that social distancing is always maintained. A shield should be considered as an alternative in these situations and I have no idea what the definition of temporary is, so. That is my report, other than we're going to ask the new business B and then old business B, both our fire department related, been asked to have those moved up and then we are going into closed session towards the end of the meeting to discuss, to determine an offer on real property located at 810 Diekman Drive, Lot 4, Block 2, in the Diekman Business Park, Lot 2. That is my report. Councilmember LeBeau?
I have nothing to report.
Councilmember Hertzberg?
No activity.
Councilmember, we're gonna be out of here in no time. Councilmember Rinkie?
We had an EDAW meeting and a policies and procedures meeting last week.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Gilmore?
Policies and procedures, yeah.
All right, thank you. We have a couple of department head reports. Start with Ron Mergan.
All right, thank you. First of all, the spring and summer cleanup went extremely well. It didn't stop me to get out of there with this log new, between the garbage recyclables, et cetera, and household hazardous waste, so we did get quite a few compliments for being there and taking all the stuff. Compost usage is with all the storms we've had, there were a few storms, it's quite heavily. In the parks, the concert, the parks can see its last concert and I guess I'd like to thank Matt for that and crew that he puts together for that. They are very well attended and appreciated. Reservations are obviously very slow on production's part, but there are a few. And I'd like to thank the Lions Club for the donation out of the splat path. You notice the units are up there and then along with the other playground equipment, they have got an enormous amount. I have compliments for the way that park has taken shape over the last two years. Let's see, the seal coating project, obviously that's been completed. We are waiting for the striping to come in, which I'd like to know will happen in the next week or so. On the airport, all the hangars in the new building are full and all the other, basically all the hangars are full except the one that we are going to keep in reserve for the daily, weekly, monthly rentals. So it has gone extremely well out there. And then the water department, we did take all our lead copper samples and they have all been submitted and waiting on the results of all. All I have, any questions?
And we are starting a waiting list for the next D hang, all right?
Correct. Yes, we are.
Already working on that. Any other questions for Ron? Okay, if not, then Belinda?
First thing I want to talk about was elections. We have a lot of dates coming up. Filing for mayor and council positions is tomorrow, starting tomorrow and runs through August 11th at 5:00 PM. It is a $2 filing fee. Kristen will be going to the Corona's Manor on August 3rd to drop off absentee supplies. On August 8th, the city hall office will be open from 10:00 AM till 3:00 PM for absentee voting. On August 11th is the primary election held at the area center in the big dining area from 7:00 AM till 8:00 PM. We are also a drop-off site for absentee ballots. In motor vehicle world, we are continuing to be very busy with lines. Virtual training will be starting anytime now for mid-drive. It's kind of a self-starter, so as soon as anyone gets a few minutes, they're gonna start getting on that. Mid-drive rollout is still scheduled for November 16th. They are not planning on delaying that at all. The admin position, external posting is happening and that will go until August 6th. That's all I have.
Okay, any questions? Belinda, when you talk about all that absentee, I assume that's just for the primary, not the general election.
That is correct. Everything is primary at this point.
Anything else? All right, thank you. Then we have before us the consent agenda, which minutes from all those meetings as listed on page one. Vouchers offer update on page two there totaling, if I get to it here, $377,598.66. And then we do have the, that's it for the consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Hertzberg, seconded by LeBeau to approve. Discussion. All favor I?
I.
Oppose? None? And carry? Then we go into new business and the first one is item B, Fire Department, the Center Care Physical Services contract, and that's on page 10. And we have the chief here for any questions on that.
Just an annual increase. I don't think it's out of line. I think it's pretty common. I just need to speak for the...
Anything to add?
No.
Nope.
I'll make a motion to approve the contract for firefighter physicals between the city of Painesville and Center Care Health Painesville is effective July 21st, July 1st, 2020.
Second.
Motion by LeBeau, seconded by, I think that was Neil Hertzberg, is that right? Okay. To approve that as on the action sheet on page 10. Discussion. All favor I?
I.
Oppose? None? That carries. And then from old business, the fitness center bids on page 58, and this is coming back because we had some questions or concerns about being sure that the quotes, we're getting basically similar services for pricing. And we do have Matt here now from the Fitness Center and Community Ed. And Bill, you, we don't have the bid from the last one or the quote, do we, in our packet? It was, our services were a little bit different and our concern was that we would get the same.
Yes.
That's on page 60, yep.
Yeah, I mean, like I said, I don't know. I mean, to compare the two facilities, I know a little bit about both of them. They have a lot of the same stuff, but I know that, you know, some things were being pointed out at the last meeting and I don't know how those all compare, so. And so I just have to provide a little memo, because the question was raised about the obligation to take the lowest bid. This is literally the lowest bid. I don't know how different the services are.
I have that. Can I, yep, go ahead. Matt, when you looked at these, are you comparable to the Snap Fitness?
I didn't, I never saw their bid. I don't know.
Could you take a look at that and just make sure you can do what they can do? Then it'll be a apples to apples. I know one of the questions that was brought up was basically what services does the fitness center provide as far as training, there were training and things like that. I know Chris had mentioned the fact that they would set up a special training agenda for us. I think somebody brought that from the council. So I know that was one of the questions that we had. A question I specifically have is timespan. Is there limitations on the hours that we can use the fitness center? I know that was one of the biggest concerns from the fire department members.
So Neil's passing down. I can, I can't speak to Snap because I'm, I don't work for them, but I'll show, I will put down why, the value that you get from Painesville Fitness Center. So we have 24-hour access. We have group fitness classes which are included with your membership. I'm not sure if the other one does that. We offer Zumba, Zumba Strong, circuit training, et cetera. We have weekly access to Painesville Inn and Suites, pool, hot tub and sauna. So they are tired out from their trainings from Fire Chief Andy. They can relax in the hot tub in the, at Painesville Inn and Suites. We have the most fitness center square footage and the most equipment in our community. More equipment equals less wait time. We have knowledgeable staff to assist you in meeting your health and fitness goals. We would make a custom firefighter workout if so true, if that's what they wanted. In 2021, we have a new walking track that'll be available. We have 24-hour on-demand group fitness classes that'll be available with our new addition. We have new cardio equipment and new cardio room, so we'll have by far the most cardio equipment in the community again. And we have dedicated gym access to our members, so gymnasium access also with our new addition. So I don't think you're gonna find anywhere that offers more services and more amenities than Painesville Fitness Center in within 30 miles of Painesville.
So on your custom firefighter workout, that is something you could talk to Shane's training officer? So you could talk to Shane and figure out a whole agenda?
Well, we would talk to small groups of firefighters because it's not a one-size-fits-all. So we could do, we could find out what levels people are at and we could do some workouts for them. And we don't need, it doesn't have to be just one workout for all the firefighters because you're all gonna be at different levels probably in their training.
You have some fat guys and some other guys in shape?
Different goals, I mean, you know, depends on what the goals are for the people working out. So.
Matt, I think another question that came up is, does that be hold for continuing years or is that a one-year half-price special?
Well, I would assume that you would, do you go, how is, what is the process? Do you go out for a quote every year or what is the, this would be for one year for sure.
This is a first.
Yeah, I mean, we evaluate, we wanna make sure it's a, of equal, a good value for the fire department. So if it's not a good fit, then I would assume they'd find a different place to go.
One of the questions that I, if I recall right, was, is 24-hour access, but, you know, certain times when it'd be used by, you know, the athletic teams or something?
Yeah, so we've been 24, 24-hour access for, oh boy, probably nine or 10 years now. And this is the first summer we've ever excluded the facility from members for any time and the reason was is COVID-19. So we have our student athletes that are using it Monday, Wednesday, Thursday from 7:00 AM to 11:00 AM. And that is only excluding our main weight area. Our members still have access to our group fitness area and our cardio training area, so that's the only time. So we post our hours of when students are using the facility, but we don't inhibit our members from coming during any hours, except since now because of COVID-19. So. Also, in 2021, we'll see, when our new facility is complete, the high school athletes will have their own weight room in the current restroom room. So there will not be any of the overlap then or where sometimes people are intimidated to come in because they're, think there's gonna be all these students in there. They will have their own weight room down in the basement. So that may alleviate some of the questions or concerns that people have had, because I know that's a concern for members when they join, so. Other questions?
You have on here 13 memberships. Is that just kind of a guest of it?
And you said, I asked how many members are you thinking you're gonna have, so?
Right now, we have approximately 13 people that are committed. Well, at that point, it was they were committed to Snap, but I have some of them that were committed while I'm not gonna wait in the fitness center, because that's where we're already at. So the 13 is just kind of a ballpark figure for right now.
I think to get a 50% off, that's a pretty generous option. You'd need to provide 10 people to make it fair, because. And that's sort of in the, there's no initiation fee, no enrollment fee, like, and stuff.
So after a year is up, what would we have to do with the software to stand after a year? If we decided to stay with you, is that kind of what you were?
Yeah, I don't know why it would be any different, but I mean, we'd wanna make sure it's a good fit for you guys too, so it'd just be a one-year commitment. Yep.
I think, Belinda, we had this discussion earlier when we first initiated the whole conversation. Is there any, we're gonna have firefighters that are gonna step off the department, join the department. How would those members change?
We would just deactivate a member that leaves and reactivate. And so if you purchase 13 memberships, you'd have 13 active cards.
Oh, you see, you're purchasing for a year is what your projection is. Both, either two more members or something?
Yeah, you could add and grow rate it throughout the year, is that what you mean?
Okay. Is that clear? Some of my questions?
Yep.
Obviously, maintain 10 through the year. We're good. We can always add and take people off.
Okay.
Well, I guess I would make a motion then to approve the firefighter fitness membership at Painesville Fitness Center.
As the lowest bid, I'll second that.
Motion by LeBeau, seconded by Gilmore to accept the quote from Painesville Fitness Center for the fire department fitness program. Discussion. All favor I?
I.
Oppose? None? That carries. All right, thank you.
They will change that in their wellness plan to, if that's possible.
Understood. All right.
Try that again, Andy.
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Almost done, no?
Almost done, no.
Thanks.
All right, back up to item A. This is coming back again. Request from the North Fork Crow River Doublebeards NDTF for rescheduling their permit for their raffle. This will be August 22nd, 2020.
I'll make a motion through the Minnesota Laffo Gambling LG 220 application for exempt permit for the North Fork Crow River Doublebeards NWTF to hold a raffle at Queen Bee's Bar and Grill Incorporated on August 22nd, 2020.
Second. Motion by Gilmore, seconded by Rinkie, I believe, right?
Yes.
To approve the Minnesota Laffo Gambling LG 220 application, as on action sheet page three for the North Fork Crow River Doublebeards NWTF. Discussion.
One question?
Yep.
Depending if nothing changes, they'd still be at 50% capacity?
That would be Queen Bee's thing.
But that's the ruling right now, right?
And so now?
My understanding is this is just a raffle. I mean, I don't, I don't think you have to be present to win. It's, you know, I mean, they're, they're just gonna draw the winner that day, but I don't.
Normally, it's a bad equipment, the whole thing.
Maybe it is, I don't know.
I'm not sure neither, but it's the.
All they're getting a permit for is the raffle.
Yep. That's almost pertinent.
Right.
Anything else? All favor I?
I.
Oppose? None? That carries. On to item C, election preparedness plan on page 13. Belinda?
Yeah, for pretty much all preparedness. This one is pretty cut and dry. It's, you have the election at the area center. The only change that you'll see on this one compared to the motor vehicle one in the city, critical sector one, is the base mask is now stated to be required. And under COVID, you will also see that we had to update the other two that you'll be approving at a later time. I'll make the motion to approve the 2020 primary and general elections COVID-19 preparedness plan.
Second. Motion by LeBeau, seconded by Rinkie. Correct?
Yes.
Okay. Everybody sounds muffled. Alicia's the only one that sounds different. Seconded by Rinkie to approve the 2020 primary and general elections COVID-19 preparedness plan. Discussion. All favor I?
I.
Oppose? None? Carry.
And item D, purchase of the 2020 squad car. Chief?
Thank you. So as you guys all know, we had a squad that sustained a deer strike a couple of weeks back. The insurance company has determined that that vehicle is no longer viable and have totaled it out. In conversations with the insurance company, the city should be receiving basically $24,000 for that vehicle. The insurance company will also be covering the cost of the un-install of the equipment, which has already been done, as well as the reinstall on the new squad car. They'll also recover, they will also cover a certain amount of the new equipment for it. The issue that we're having right now is the cars themselves. To be able to replace that vehicle, there are very few that are actually sitting on a lot anywhere. We have not been able to find any Ford Interceptor sitting on a lot and as we know, we're still waiting to even find out when our, one that we ordered back in March is gonna be built. There are a couple, I believe four or five Tahos that are currently sitting on a lot in Ohio that would be suitable, based on the type of vehicle, based on department needs. I would recommend that we would strongly consider purchasing that. The original plan with our squads had us purchasing not only a road squad but a K-9 squad this year. Due to financial reasons, we decided to forego the K-9 squad. We purchased the squad from Wade Park to accommodate that. What I would be recommending would be that we purchase a 2020 Tahoe from Gilliland Chevrolet in St. Cloud. They would be responsible for getting that vehicle back to Minnesota. And what we would do is we would take the current K-9 squad. That would take the place of what the damaged squad would have been, which would be going into that third squad car position. So the car that I would traditionally drive, that we'd use for training, that sort of thing. That actually is more of a benefit to us. That squad's got lower miles, so we'll be able to get a little bit more time out of it and potentially some more time out of just all the squads in general. And then we would replace that squad with the new Tahoe, or the K-9 squad with the new Tahoe. We would leave the current K-9 squad set up as it is, which would also give us a backup squad in case something were to ever happen to the new Tahoe, say got into an accident or damaged or something like that. That way we wouldn't be down a squad car. I did check with Ranger Chevrolet. We can purchase a vehicle through them. They do not have access to any vehicles currently on their lot. Any vehicle that would be purchased through them would not show up until sometime after the first of the year, sometime January, February is what we're hearing. There is a, you know, a little bit of a difference, you know, it's about a $3,000 difference between the two. But in talking with Belinda and the auditors, we believe that the, the need being that we have a squad that's gone down to damage would more than justify going with a lower and higher price than getting the car that's currently sitting there.
Can Painesville Chevy get that one?
I did not talk to Painesville Chevy specifically about it. I don't know if they could or not.
Because they should be able to dealer trade for one too.
Possibly.
I think we should try working with our local dealers as much as we can.
I guess I'd like the question to be asked, if they have something to trade, if they have something to trade.
Right, yeah.
Yes, exactly. Have to be something desirable for the.
Well, yeah. Yep. We both play that game.
What, do you have a quote for the cost to get it outfitted for a K-9 unit?
No, because that's gonna ultimately be determined based on the insurance company itself. Chances are the cost of the outfit of it is gonna be zero because we're gonna have to, you know, outfit the entire new squad. Now, the equipment, we're in the process of getting that. I mean, we've got the quotes from before and a, you know, ballpark figure. We're expecting probably about $20,000 out of city pocket, out of the city's pocket to be able to outfit this and pay for the difference in the squad car itself.
I get where Alicia's going with this. The last one is to put the dog kennel and so forth. The insurance is gonna pay for a dog kennel and a new truck?
The insurance will probably pay for like stuff and that's what we're working with the insurance company on now.
Because the one that got wrecked didn't have a dog kennel in it, so I'm trying to figure out why they would even.
So they may not pay, they probably are not gonna pay for the kennel. What they would pay for would be to replace it as it was. We would be responsible for the overage, which should probably be roughly, you know, $1,500 to $2,000 on the kennel side. We've asked our supplier, you know, and our outfitter for those quotes. I just have not got them yet. It's kind of one of those things that we are in, you know, we're in a situation where we kind of have this opportunity with these vehicles in Ohio. I will tell you that I have no idea where the dealership is in Ohio. I know Gilliland knows where they're at because they've purchased vehicles through them before. I know that there are at least three of the four or five vehicles sitting there that are spoken for. We currently have one on hold, depending upon the outcome of this evening. I asked Ranger Chevrolet. They mentioned the dealership out in Ohio as well. That was early last week. And he's like, well, I can check with them and see if we can get anything and I have yet to hear from Ranger. So I'm not even sure our dealership will be able to get them. So that's kind of the one, you know, I don't disagree, you know, as far as working through the local. But I, this is a kind of unique situation just because of the circumstances. There's, rarely do you ever find a squad car sitting on a lot anywhere. Most places do not preorder them.
So because you have one on hold there, could we make a motion to purchase that on the condition that you check with the local Chevy dealership to make sure that they couldn't also get a vehicle at the same price? Is that?
That would be appropriate.
Okay. I will make that motion then to approve the purchase of the 2020 Chevy Taco through Gill and Chevrolet at $38,733 unless the same vehicle could be purchased through our local Chevy dealership for the same price.
I got a question before I second it. So you're thinking it's gonna be?
Be seconded first.
I got seconded first? Seriously? All right, I'll second it.
Okay. Any discussion on the motion?
Yes. So you're thinking 20,000 out of the police department funds plus the 24,000, so you're figuring close to 6,000 on outfit?
After sitting down with Tom, going through what we have, what we believe we can pull from the old squad, yeah, that's what we're anticipating is roughly $6,000.
How many squads do we have?
We would have a total of four. We'd have one K-9, the two primary road squads, and then the backup squad which is used for training purposes and the one I take home.
And could be K-9 capable and would still be K-9 capable if nothing?
Correct. And we currently have a little bit more than that, just simply because we're in the process of shifting cars through and getting rid of cars and that sort of thing. But we traditionally run, well, we traditionally run three because of the K-9, we would run four.
Why would we need four? Why couldn't we stay at three?
So I think this is the prime example of why we can't stay at three. If we stayed with three squad cars, we run the risk any given day of wrecking another squad. So if we're at three, one goes down due to a deer hit. We're in a situation like we are now, we're at two. We suffer another loss of a car, whether that's a K-9 squad or the other road squad. Now we're putting Now, we're putting that K-9 squad in an everyday position to be used, which means that K-9 squad's ineffective. We lose the opportunity for Tom to respond to any calls if that car is in the general rotation.
All right, anything other questions?
If we went through our local dealer, and you said Ranger was like January?
Correct.
Would our local dealer be able to do the same price for January?
I don't know if they'd be able to do the same price for January or not. Ranger's the one with the contract pricing for the state.
Right.
Whether or not Painesville Chevrolet would meet that, I have no idea.
Because for close to $4,000, I'm not sure. What are we looking at, five months?
The issue's time, and I would say bare minimum you're looking at five months. But with COVID and everything that's happened, there's no guarantees that that's even going to be possible. I mean, we ordered a car back in March. I don't expect to see that squad car until sometime next year. We don't even have a build date on it right now. And agencies that ordered their squads in January, they're just now getting build dates out in August. So, the difficult part and the reason that the vehicles through Gilleyland are important is because of the time.
So, our insurance, we didn't have full replacement?
So, the way our insurance works is we did have full replacement, but they will replace the vehicle at 200% of the current value. In this case, this vehicle's valued at about $12,000. They will replace it at full replacement cost. Or there was a third one. I don't remember what that was, do you, Belinda? There was a third equation in there. But ultimately, in this case, it's the lesser of all of those, and the lesser of those was $24,000, so 200% of the value of the car.
It's called limited replacement, and it's what we're allowed to get through.
Do you have this money in your capital improvement or...
The money would be in capital improvement to outfit the car, yes.
Because our budget isn't pretty.
No, it's not. And we're doing everything we can within the insurance company. And I will be working with Tim Keefe with the League of Minnesota Cities to get as much of the replacement equipment done as possible. What I got from him is it's more of a gray area versus black and white as far as what they do replace. So, the goal is to get as much of this paid for by insurance as possible.
Anything else? All right, then we do have a motion to approve the purchase of a 2020 Chevrolet Tahoe from Gilleyland Chevrolet for $38,733, unless we can get the same vehicle through Painesville Chevrolet, because that...
At the same price, yep.
Yep, for that same price. Okay, all in favor, I?
I.
Oppose? None, that carried? Thank you for the motion by LeBeau, seconded by Gilmore. Item E, deputy registrar agreement on page 29. Belinda?
This is, State's putting together a new deputy registrar agreement. I don't know that it varies a whole lot from the last one. They did have, we did get Belinda's name in there. We've been playing, having, trying to get them to give her a changeover, but we finally, I believe, got that accomplished and just needs approval.
Could we have somebody appointed as the backup on here? For the...
The contact person would be Belinda. That's only if you have a situation, especially with like a private deputy, where maybe the owner is a deputy registrar, but they're not always on site. They have maybe two or three stations where she is here on a daily basis. She would be the contact person as well.
Okay.
I move to approve the deputy registrar agreement between the City of Painesville and the Minnesota Department of Public Safety Driver and Vehicle Services.
Second.
Motion by Rinkie, seconded by LeBeau to approve the deputy registrar agreement between the City of Painesville and Minnesota Department of Public Safety Driver and Vehicle Services. Discussion, all in favor, I?
I.
Oppose? None, that carried? And now on to item F, ordinance number 14, third series, tobacco, chapter 10. And my understanding, basically getting us in line with the state on these, correct, Bill?
Yeah, it was, I mean, I honestly, I went through, just updated our tobacco ordinances to change everything over to H21. And I got very surprised to learn that when the codifiers printed our ordinance, they left out the licensing provisions regarding tobacco. I had asked them not to do that, but they still did it. So, we need to, we're basically putting it back and just updating it. But this is something that was in our old city code. And for reasons I don't understand or in the codification process, it simply got deleted. It was news to me that it wasn't in there, but when I went looking for it, it's gone. So, I'm attempting to put it back.
And this was reviewed by policies and we recommended it for approval.
Okay, sounds like we're in agreement then to proceed. All right, then the next one is item G, ordinance number 16, third series, tobacco, chapter 20.
That one's in the update because probably, no, there was some language in there that I changed to be consistent with the language of the other ordinance in paragraph F. On the bottom of the second page, and I think also on the last page there somewhere in paragraph... No, not there. Maybe that's the only place it was. But the reference to indigenous person rather than American Indian.
Oh, okay.
I think it was in there in two places, but I can't find the other one now.
Okay, so then this one here for, okay, we'll get that published soon then. Come back at a later time. Okay, on to all business. Item A, alley improvements on page 53.
Okay, thank you. The quantities coming in underestimate and the contingencies. You know, we do have approximately $100,000 remaining in the 2019 construction fund. And with that, as previously had proved, a study from both, they look at the downtown alleys, which are the next project on our CIP list. As you can see, I think it's on page 57, it's a map, alley one of the, you know, between Sterns and Augusta Avenue, alley two, et cetera, there. Total cost of all the alleys downtown would be $219,558. If we take out alley number five, which is identified between Washington Avenue and Augusta, behind AMPI in that area, we would be at $143,598. The Public Works Committee, we did look at this, the condition of the alleys. They are not in good condition and need to rehab. We did recommend that we proceed with alleys one through four at that cost of $143,598. And the cost then to come out of the 2019 construction fund. And again, these alleys would not be assessed of any property values.
Question, when you do the one behind the city hall, is at the same time, should you do the parking lot behind the city hall? That needs to be done at all at the same time for the city hall?
I guess looking at the back parking lot, I don't believe that's needed right now. It's not...
I guess that'd be a good time. I don't know if it needs it.
Yes.
And the timeframe on, how long is it going to take to do like to be in the city hall?
Yeah, right now, if everything proceeds, they're looking, I think, at about September, October timeframe to get this work done. A lot of the alleys would get a curb on one side to help drainage. So, it's going to be, it'll be a couple of week process per alley.
Okay, so the one behind the city hall will be a couple of weeks?
Yeah, I mean, the biggest part is once you pour the curb and gutter, that takes seven days to drive over it. So, that really prolongs it a little bit.
Are they going to do drivable curbs?
Yeah.
So, there's no access of that alleys when they do them, correct?
Well, there'd still be access, but you're restricted by driving over the curb. So, it depends, you know, curbs aren't going to be on one side of them. So, there would be some restrictions during that time.
Okay. Interesting to keep that from happening.
Any idea which side?
Yeah. I was just thinking for the, I was just thinking for the city hall employees and so forth, if they're going to be out parking for a week, how long is it going to take? Because I could use my parking lot if I knew about it. Because there's not enough parking out here for the people anyway, so it's just kind of...
Yeah, city hall, the curb's actually going on the other side of the alley. So, that parking should be available quicker. I mean, it is still going to be an inconvenience, don't get me wrong. You guys remove the pavement, cut it out, put new gravel in. So, it is a process, but you know, we'll try to get the parking, have to get the parking restart as quickly as possible.
Just keep me informed if we need to play around in that direction. I'll make a motion to approve this. Motion to reconstruct the alleys one through four at an estimated cost of $143,598 with funds to come from the 2019 construction project.
Second.
Motion by Gilmore, seconded by LeBeau to reconstruct the alleys one through four, shown on page 53 there, at an estimated cost of $143,598 with funds to come from the 2019 construction project. Discussion, all in favor, I?
I.
Oppose? None, that carried? And then the airport fly-in. Ron?
Great, thank you. Obviously, as a result of the air show has been canceled. However, just to try to recoup some costs, the friends at the airport, they are still planning a airport barbecue and they are still having the airport rides. So, there will still be some activity, but they will get nowhere near their limit of 250 people. So, that is the plan out there right now. They're already starting to plan next year. I believe they already set the date for August 7th, 2021. So, everyone else, put that on the calendar.
Okay, no action needed there. Any questions on that? Not then, on to COVID update on age 64. Ms. Ludwig?
And what we have here is the two preparedness plans updating to mandate the masks.
I move to approve the updated motor vehicle and city critical sector business COVID-19 preparedness plans.
Second. Motion by Rinkie, seconded by Grubbsburg to approve the updated motor vehicle and city critical sector business COVID-19 preparedness plans. Discussion, all in favor, I?
I.
Oppose? None, that carried? And the safe station, page 73?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Real quick, on the COVID stuff, because we will not have another meeting beforehand, the 19 night community picnic at this point is not going to be happening this year because of COVID. Central Care is not in a position to be able to assist or take part in that until sometime after August 31st. So, at least at this point, we're going to suspend it for this year and we'll see maybe if we can find something, work something out later and maybe later in the fall. But as of right now, the picnic won't be happening in August.
All right, well, it's not all right, but all right, it is what it is. All right, thank you for that. All right, then on to item E, safe station, and Ms. LeBeau. Thanks for your work here and give us an update now.
Yeah, we met a couple of weeks ago and kind of mapped out five locations that we're looking at. City Hall being one. They're working with Abon Plastics right now. The baseball stadium, community park, and then something at either the fire hall or gazebo park. And these would be the outside stations, like Caitlin brought in and demonstrated to us. So, what we are looking for tonight would be approval from the council. She has the funds available to place one on the outside of city hall within the next week or so. So, we need approval for that. And then I guess we also would like approval to put one either at fire hall or gazebo park. And then we didn't, it didn't get on here, but community park also, I believe. And then we were wondering about whether the city is willing to cover the $1,800 a year annual fee after the first two years.
That $1,800 is for five stations, not $1,800 a piece?
Right, it's for five, all five of them.
For the city hall makes 100% sense, and I would push for the fire hall more than the gazebo. For one thing, if you went on a 911 call and they said the gazebo park, if you're not from here, you're not going to know where it's at. The fire hall, you would know where it's, it's easier to find than a park is because you go by location.
Yes, but, so with these, it would more likely be when somebody calls in for an emergency, the emergency personnel would direct them. Whereas the fire hall has some in their trucks already that they will take out on those calls. But this would be for like people in the community. So, if there was an emergency that happened, say, at gazebo park at the playground equipment there or something. Does that make sense?
Right, but what I'm saying is if you were brand new to the area and you're at, in the park at the school, and they said, "Yeah, it's at the gazebo park," or, "Yeah, it's the fire department."
The thing about the parks, you know, they're closed six months.
I think the fire department's more secure. You'd more think there'd be something there to help you. I guess it's just a thought process. I don't, I believe we should do the two of them. And I, and we'll make a motion in a second on what she's doing because she's doing a great job at it. But I don't know what everybody else is feeling, fire hall, gazebo park?
Well, my opinion for what it's worth is you probably have more people at the gazebo park on a regular basis. And we don't have a lot of signage that shows where the fire hall is either. You know, it's kind of hidden in a residential area, so a lot of the people don't know where that is either. You know, I kind of look at the density of where the most people are most of the time, and it would be gazebo park, but...
So, the other thing that we are looking at, and I can pass this around if you want, but they had mapped out where they currently have them, and then they kind of look at the radius, a certain, I can't remember exactly how many feet, but radius around each of the current ones. And so, the fire department is kind of right on the edge of some of the other ones, whereas, you know, gazebo park would then create a new sort of, create a radius, if that makes sense?
Yep, yep.
So, but I mean, we could certainly leave it as the fire hall or gazebo park, and they can make that decision.
And as far as hooking them up, the fire department and/or the gazebo park, they could put it on the bathrooms, correct, on the stone wall?
Yeah.
Because you got power and so forth there.
That's what I'd recommend is on the bathrooms at gazebo.
Because you don't want it in the gazebo or on the gazebo, I wouldn't think.
No, I would think the bathrooms and probably a community park as well. If we put one out there, the bathrooms.
Well, then I'll make a motion to allow the placing of a station, a safe station on Painesville City Hall, Fire Hall, or Gazebo Park, depending... on Painesville City Hall, Fire Hall, or Gazebo Park, depending on what the committee would like. Can I do that? Would your motion also include the Community Park?
Yeah.
As a third location. Oh, we're gonna do.
I don't know when they'll be ready to put one out there, but that was one of the one, locations that we talked about, and that would also need council approval.
Oh, okay. Gotcha, can I amend that then and say, or the Community Park? Then I'll second that.
And Community Park?
So that, yeah, and my understanding is that would be the, the three places that we're looking, the first three.
First three would be Painesville City Hall, Fire Hall, or Gazebo Park, and Community.
And Community Park.
Okay.
Is that what you guys are looking for?
Yep.
And I understand it as City Hall, Fire Station, or Park, and Community Park.
Yep.
Okay, and it, it's not, the ball field is not, that would be through the school, right, not through the city? The ball stadium out there?
Correct.
Okay.
And she has the funds for, for the first one, or?
Yep, so she has the funds for the one at City Hall, and then it sounded like maybe there was a donation also for the one out at Avon Plastics. So that would be two going in right away, hopefully.
And I know that she has been trying to get, she was not able to make the first or the last Lions meeting, she was on family vacation, but I think she may be coming to the next one to ask for some additional funding. So I know she is working on trying to raise the funds.
Yep.
So we do a motion and a second for allowing them to be placed at Painesville City Hall, Fire Hall, or Gazebo Park, and Community Park. All right, any other discussion? All favor I?
I.
Oppose none, that carried.
Then I'll make a motion to cover the cost of eighteen hundred per year, starting in year three, for the five save stations. And I'd have to ask Belinda where we'd take them funds from, or would we make a budget line for them in three years?
We would have to do a line item and add that to the budget.
Yeah, then I would say make a line item in the, in the three years then. Could be in twenty twenty-four.
Second. Motion by Gilmore, seconded by Ranky to cover the cost of eighteen hundred dollars per year, starting in year three for the five save stations, and understanding that we'll find a line item, line item in the budget for that. Discussion?
One question, is, is twenty twenty going to be the first year, so twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one are covered, and we will start paying in twenty twenty-two?
I believe so. It would be, yeah, till, yep, July to July, probably. I can finalize that with her, but I believe it would be, we would start paying that fee in twenty twenty-two.
Okay. All right. All favor I?
I.
Oppose none, that carried. And for update ordinance number seventeen, third series, wind and solar energy regulations. Hopefully will get us off of our moratorium, correct?
So this did go through planning and passed with the recommendation that section thirty-six dash one to eight be added, so that if somebody wanted to put up a, some sort of wind generator on their home, they could do that, but that it would be a conditional use, so they're not putting up an industrial sized one, might be something that you could mount on a garage to just triple charge a battery of some sort.
I'll make the motion to approve ordinance number seventeen, third series, and its official summary for publication.
Second. Okay, motion by Hertzberg, seconded by Ranky. Too close to the edge of the paper here. To approve ordinance number seventeen, third series, and its official summary for publication. Discussion? All favor I?
I.
Oppose none, that carried. Okay, and our last action item, ordinance number eighteen, third series, in regards to storage in C-one or C-two. And we have it on page eighty. And the planning board has discussed this, they have not come to, have split decision on that.
Yeah, so when it came to planning, one of the members was, I did not support this because he was concerned with the interference and regulation of property owners and not wanting the government to interfere with use of properties. The other one, the other individual who voted against it, was primarily concerned with the lack of any type of a addressing of any individuals who are already out of compliance. That individual wanted it to be a little bit more retroactive, perhaps giving a property owner a year to become in compliance. We did not have a discussion on how that would work or how that would operate, so I don't know if that discussion would have changed that individual's opinion. But otherwise, the other two were in favor of it, and the individual who abstained was because a delay in the mail meant he didn't have opportunity to review it in time.
In regards to the issue about people who are not, I mean, they would be a pre-existing non-conforming use, they'd be entitled to maintain their use. We don't, we don't have a sundown thing for, you know, I mean, you probably could develop something like that on certain uses where you really wanna get rid of them, or you create basically a sundown provision that says you have a certain amount of time. But we don't have anything like that, we just, if you're pre-existing and you're not non-conforming when you started doing whatever is now non-conforming because of an amendment, you, you have the right to continue. And there are certain things that go along with that. If you discontinue, your right to go back to it is ended, but, but basically, you're not gonna be stopped just because you don't conform with, with a, a change to the zoning ordinance.
And Bill, was my understanding correct, that if we did have a sundown provision, that we may have to compensate property owners for restricting their use?
That's a possibility, yeah. You might, I mean, essentially, you might be doing a taking. Yeah, so, although, that's not always clear that it is, that it really is taking, as long as there's a viable use, generally, that's not true, but you're, you're gonna get into that fight. You know, that's, that's not a comfortable thing, you know, you don't wanna do that unless you have uses that are really important, that you really wanna get rid of. I mean, I've seen cities do it with, you know, with certain things that they really want to get out of an area, a junkyard, or an adult type business, but you don't, you don't see cities do that very often, because you know you're taking on a fight, if you try to do that.
And I don't go to the planning meetings, but Jennifer did tell me that she wanted to make sure, I was aware that there was discussion at the planning meeting, that if you have two buildings, putting a notation in here that one could be storage, but since that ordinance was not approved in planning, that was not put in this.
Say again?
Sean, you might be able to enlighten us more than I can, but she said that the discussion was held about if they were to approve this, putting a paragraph in there that if you have two buildings, one could be used for storage, but since that was not approved, it's not in this document that you see in front of you.
So I, I don't recall the exact discussion, and I'll trust Jennifer's notes over my memory, but essentially, the intent was to say, if your primary business is a storefront, then obviously that means you might have a secondary building that's going to be used for storage, and that this ordinance would not interfere with that. It's just to drive the primary purpose of having a storefront in a commercial area. And I, I don't recall if that needed to be added, or if that was just already built in, but I'll trust Jennifer if she said that it needed to be added.
Was there any reference to that second building being, like if it's downtown, not the front building?
She didn't say anything about that.
Okay.
She did not.
Which?
Would that be something that we could put in here as a permitted accessory use? Or is that not?
And I think that's what she wanted, why she wanted to point it out, because she didn't like, like, especially Sean, who was at the planning meeting, didn't think if this was being approved with that yet, because that's, it's not have to be added to it.
I think the intent of the discussion at the planning board meeting was that any business is going to have some storage, whether it's with that building or if it's a separate building.
So that, I mean, now that I'm looking at the permitted accessory uses, number two, where it says commercial or business buildings, or a use accessory to the principal use, so would that, seems like that would encompass a business that has a secondary place for storing?
And I thought that's where we had landed on it as well, was that that paragraph encompassed it, and we didn't need to add something, but.
Like, that's the way I understood it also.
Cause this is only affecting the main building.
Yeah, yeah, in terms of all the storefront.
The storefront.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, we could make C-two say including storage, if, you know, I mean, it would be clearer to say that, but because storage is expressly permitted in C-two, where it's not in C-one.
Is it impossible to have a business without some kind of storage, whether it's gonna be in the back building?
Understood. I, I understand, but I think they, they, I think planning, I wasn't there, but from the discussion here, I'm taking it that they were concerned about somebody who owned two buildings, one of which had no business purpose other than storage for the other. Oh.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't know that that's a situation that exists or that we need to worry about, but I'm getting that was the discussion.
Well, I think the, my understanding, you know, the intent is that if we're gonna have a downtown, you know, C-one retail type of a downtown, the intent would not be to have a storefront taken up by storage, regardless of whether or not it's, you know, a second own building or whatever.
And that's, my understanding of the way it is now, is that obviously, we know that everybody has some storage within their building, but we're not setting this up so there could be a building exclusively dedicated to storage. But if we wanted to do that, I mean, you know, that's, it can be done, but I don't, I don't know if it's desirable, that's, that's the council's call in the end here, so.
And then when we look at C-two on page eighty-seven, we have a expressly permitting storage units. That originally, I believe, read rental storage units, and the planning committee did, on a divided vote, remove the word rental to allow private storage units to be constructed and used in C-two as well. So I just wanted to point that out as an area that was discussed.
And I think that makes sense, because we have storage units in C-two, that's where we have had storage built in Painesville, it just makes good sense that that would say what it says now, in my opinion, because that's what we've done.
So is the only way to get rid of our moratorium to pass this ordinance?
Well, the moratorium closes by its own terms at some point, I mean, it would go away, where you could vote to eliminate the moratorium. I mean, and not do this, but I, the purpose of doing the moratorium in the first place was to give us time to get this in front of the council, I thought, but.
I just can't remember if we set a timeline on the moratorium or not.
I think by statute, it's one year, unless they're extended.
Okay.
I believe that this likely would have passed planning if there had been more advanced notice and maybe some additional discussion. So I don't know if maybe we want to send it back for an official vote from there, or if we feel comfortable voting on it tonight. I do know the first time we discussed this, it did have a lot of support from the committee. The vote last week was somewhat unexpected.
When do they meet again?
Next month.
Bob, we have time to do the moratorium, but we did have some interest in storage, didn't we?
We did. Was there, is there a reason why we would not wanna vote on this tonight?
Well, it's up to us.
I mean, I feel like we put the moratorium in place because the council wanted to see an ordinance like this, so now we see it, so.
Well, I will move to approve ordinance number eighteen, third series.
I will second.
Motion by Ranky, seconded by LeBeau to approve ordinance number eighteen, third series, discussion? All favor I?
I.
Oppose?
I.
One opposed, motion does carry, order one.
I will move to approve the official summary for ordinance number eighteen, third series.
Second.
Motion by Ranky, seconded by LeBeau to approve the official summary for this number eighteen, third series, discussion? All favor I?
I.
Oppose?
I.
One opposed, motion carries, order one. That is all that I see for action items informational. We got the Live West Sector Sanitation Report, August and September meeting schedules, and note that all the reports can be found on the city webpage. Then we will be going into closed session to determine an offer on real property located eight-ten Deekman Drive, block four, block two, Deekman Business Park, lap two. And we'll have to, you can go, chief. And Chuck, can you say?
Yep.
All right, we might have some questions for you.
I think, I think usually we have said what, what the offer is in open session. I don't, I don't see a problem with it in this circumstance, it's not like we're in a bidding war with somebody else.
That's true.
Are we set?
I think she's probably ready to go.
All right, then we will go back into open session. We've been in closed session to discuss, to determine an offer on real property located eight-ten Deekman Drive, block four, block two, Deekman Business Park, lap two, parcel number is listed there, and looking for a motion.
I'll make the motion to direct the C attorney to contact Steel Turkey LLC with the counter offer that we agreed on of three hundred and fifty thousand on a four-year contract, fifty thousand down, fifty thousand a year for years one to four, and a hundred thousand at the end of year four, at a two percent interest rate.
I will second it. Discussion?
To clarify the motion, it would be fifty thousand down, fifty thousand years two through three.
Two, three, and four.
It'd have to be fifty, fifty, fifty.
No.
Four payments of fifty.
Four years. Four years at fifty thousand, plus the fifty down, a hundred thousand at the end, that's.
Total of three fifty.
Total of three fifty, yep.
My understanding of that is fifty on the one-year anniversary, fifty on the two-year anniversary.
Right.
Times four, a hundred thousand dollars.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, any other discussion? The motion is to, for the city. The motion is to, for the city, for a motion to offer to Steel Turkey LLC, a $350,000 offer, contract for D, $50,000 down, $50,000 a year for four years, $100,000 at the end of year four.
2% interest.
At 2% interest. Okay, all favor I?
I.
I oppose. Eight, one opposed, the motion carries, order one. And we are adjourned. Thank you all very much for your time on this evening when you could have been outside.